All right, it is six o'clock and I call this meeting to order. It's the open work session of the City Council of the City of North Kansas City, May eighteenth. Eric.
Uh, thanks, sir. So in February, uh, the City Council indicated the desire to review alternative options to the current North Kansas City Flex Bus Service. Uh, before the next service contract renewal with the Kent City Area Transit Transit Authority, the KC ATA. So at the work session on May fourth, uh, your last work session. Uh, KC ATA staff was present to discuss the results of a recent survey of riders. Uh, some opportunities for cost cutting and revenue enhancement and opportunities for broadened service. Uh, at this work session, uh, Teresa Wilken of TransDev On Demand is here. Uh, to discuss options available through, uh, that company using the Z Trip On Demand model. So at this point, I will turn, uh, matters over to Ms. Wilken to make a presentation to you and take your questions and, uh, and have discussion.
Hello, everybody. Um, there should be a slideshow somewhere. Am I not seeing that? Oh. Amazing. So, uh, I'm Teresa Wilken. I am the General Manager of Z Trip Kansas City. Um, so Z Trip Kansas City, uh, you can actually go to the next slide if you want. So Z Trip Kansas City. Um, is actually the new name for what was formerly known as Kansas City Transportation Group or, um, Yellow Cab, 10-10 Taxi. Um, kind of all those pieces are now known as Z Trip. Um, and we are under, uh, WHC Worldwide, um, is our, is our parent company at this point. So currently, Z Trip operates in over twenty cities under WHC. Um, and Z Trip is a culmination of, uh, taxis and TNCs, uh, NEMT providers, paratransit providers. Um, do a lot of school cap transportation and that kind of things, um, in all the different cities. Uh, they have several different booking options that passengers can use, and these would all be available to your, um, passengers or your users. Uh, depending on what they prefer. So they can, they can hail, um, a vehicle or create a personal trip with a driver directly. We have a twenty-four-seven call center. Um, so that there's always a live person to talk to if there's ever a trip problem or anything like that. And they can also book online. Um, they can book in the, the Z Trip app, and like I said, they can have personal drivers. Um, we have multiple account options. I'm gonna go over a few of them that I think probably most apply to something you guys might wanna consider if you decide to go, um, this route. Uh, there's a direct bill option, a contracted account management option. And there's, we have prepaid vouchers, um, or prepaid, uh, cards you can use for users. And I'll go into detail on each of those for you. Um, so Z Trip Kansas City actually has, in addition to Z Trip, the, um, on-demand vehicles, um, that you see running around. Um, we also have Super Shuttle, carry limousine. We run shuttle services through contracts with KU, KCI, Cerner. Uh, we do convention shuttle work, um, and a lot more. And we do a lot of specialized contracts. So we have contracts with the KCATA. We run. The Ride KC Freedom Program. So we do all the paratransit work for the KCATA, and then we also have, um, their freedom on demand. We run the Johnson County Microtransit Program. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. Um, but we actually provide all the drivers dispatch, um, and operations pieces for that, um, particular project that's down there. We work with Kansas City Missouri School District. Um, we summit school district, independent school district, about twenty other districts and charters, um, through that to run. Um, pre-COVID, we would run about twelve to fourteen hundred, um, school trips a day. Uh, we also run FEC work. We work with Joka Special Edition, et cetera. So we do. A lot of different things, and so we can talk about what options, um, might apply and, and work for you all up there. And you guys can feel free to stop me at any time. Um, and ask questions if something's not clear. Um, I'm pretty easygoing with stuff like that. Um, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So our driver requirements, all the drivers have full background checks. Uh, they always, um, have a pre-contract drug screen with us. So before they ever get into a vehicle. Um, they do a full drug screen, um, and then they're also in a managed FTA random program, which means that. Um, currently, we're at a fifty percent level, so the equivalent of fifty percent of our drivers are randomly tested every year. Um, everybody has to have a clean MVR, so we pull that before they get into a vehicle, and then we pull it. Um, at least annually, some contracts, we actually pull it twice a year for, um, and then you also pull it any. Uh, time there's an event, like an incident or an accident, we pull it to double check that. All of our vehicles are equipped with camera systems, so that records, uh, trips, interactions, driving habits, safety, incident investigation. So anytime there's a question about, uh, if a driver was rude, if a driver failed to provide the service that the contract requires. Um, if there's any question of safe driving, um, if there's, uh, anytime there's an accident or event, again, we're pulling video on that. And they also have, the camera systems have some safety reporting features, so they trap things like, um, G-force. Uh, hits, so if they have sudden braking, uh, fast starts, they hit a curb, things like that, we get alerts and notices. Um, and we actually have a third-party company that reviews all of those, um, scores them, ranks them, and gives us alerts if it's something serious, so we can get right on. Uh, next slide. Um, so of all the Z Trip account models that I'm gonna go through, um, they all offer the twenty-four-seven dispatch. Um, or you can have an option to set the hours of service. So for example, if you just decided that. You wanted this to go from six AM to six PM, you know, seven days a week, or Monday through Saturday, or whatever the case may be. Um, we can set hours of service, um, that lock out the accounts when those hours, um, when we're outside of that, those hours. If that's something you're interested in. Um, all the trips can be in on-demand service, um, or they can be booked in advance with your requested pickup time. So for example, if someone wanted to request a pickup time for nine-thirty next Monday. Um, they could book that either through the app or in person or on the web. Um, or they can call and request the next available vehicle in the area for on-demand service. All the trips can be booked through the call center. They can be booked on the Z Trip app or the web. Um, standard meter rates for a Z Trip are ten dollars for the first five miles, two dollars for each additional mile. Um, so that's just sort of something to keep in mind as we, as we move through, um, trips. So. I couldn't find any trips in North Kansas City that looked like if they stayed within the city limits, that would be over that five-mile range. So. Roughly ten dollars per trip is what you guys are looking for. Um, all of our costs are per trip, not per passenger. So if someone is a user and they book a vehicle, they can take up to four people in that vehicle with them. For the same price. So if they have someone, um, who's with them, whether it's a PCA, or a child, or a friend, or whatever the case may be, up to four can ride, it's the same price. All of these prices that I'm gonna talk about are per trip, not per passenger. Uh, next slide. So the first one is kind of just the basic standard account. So what this would look like for you guys is North Kansas City would be set up with an account number, say, one, two, three, four. Anyone who knows that account number can book a ride. Um, you just get billed at the end of the month for all the rides that were booked on an account. Um, now, we can cap the count at how much the trip will pay. For example, if the count was capped at eight dollars and the meter was ten dollars. The passenger would just have the remaining two dollars. They would pay that in the vehicle, right? So you could still use a standard account to still have them have a co-pay. Um, but the pros of this account is very easy. It's very straightforward. Um, the passenger has a co-pay. It's really just sort of the, the simplest of the accounts. Um, the cons of this one, and these are very important. Um, there's very little control over trip volume. So passengers siding just to take it, um, you know, they're just gonna go to the quick trip, and then they're gonna run over to the Save-A-Lot, and then they're gonna run and grab a taco, and then they're gonna go to Harrah's, or whatever they're just gonna do. All of a sudden, they have five or six individual trips at ten dollars apiece, right? Um, so depending on what their co-pay is, that's where you're looking at your cost being up to ten dollars, or if it's nine dollars a trip, or whatever, you can see how that could add up pretty quickly. Um, so it's pretty difficult to control the trip volume. There's no real barrier to someone using that. Um, and you also don't get great reporting on this. So when someone books this trip, they can just kind of call in and they can give their name, and we have their phone number, but you don't necessarily. Have any way to verify who that person is, or if that's their real name, or who the actual users are. Um, it's pretty loosey-goosey sort of on what the recording feels like with this. Um, next slide. Currently, standard accounts like this get used by hospitals and medical facilities. Um, but again, their control is they use a pre-printed voucher. Um, so either the front desk staff, or the nurses in the ER, or security actually has a pre-printed voucher, has their account number, they hand it out. Um, they're, uh, they have a unique, um, identifier, so they're all numerically, um, printed on there, so that, uh, they can't be copied or, or, or misused that way. So. They have the control of having that voucher, which is not necessarily something you guys would have, um, with passengers just sort of calling in to use the account number. Um, businesses use this a lot for random and post-accident drug tests, work comp, physical therapy appointments, sometimes transportation after termination, et cetera. Um, we have a lot of shelters and safe homes that use these accounts, because again, they're able to sort of put that pre-printed voucher in the hands of the passenger. Next slide. Thanks. So the North Kansas City price for a standard account is basically that, um, meter rate. Um, if you guys were doing, you know, counting your current ridership roughly about three hundred per week. Um, you'd be looking at three thousand dollars a week at current trip levels, um, not considering co-pays. So again, if you guys did a dollar per trip co-pay or two dollars, you can kind of see. Pretty quickly where the math goes on that. Um, this, um, this is a really open sort of style of an account, and the reality is, without any sort of barrier. Um, unless you had a pretty high co-pay situation, um, I would say that your trip volume would go up, and I don't. And know how high up it would go. So when you have a low co-pay, you have. Ease of use, there's no limiting factor, like currently, you're kind of limited to the one bus and what it can do each day. Um, suddenly, they have access to a fleet of vehicles, um, and your capacity gets a lot bigger, then there's a good chance your trip volume would grow and potentially exceed your budget. So please keep that in mind. Um, the reality is, I'm here to figure out if something works for you guys, and if it works well within your budget, then it's great for both of us. But if I present you with an option that's gonna. Put you out of your budget, and we end up having to shut this program down after three months, it just doesn't do any of us any good. So. I'm pretty upfront about that. I'll tell you how much I think things are gonna cost, and I can tell you sort of what trip volume or demand might look like or grow to based on. Um, you know, how you decide to lay out your co-pays and things. So, next slide. So co-pay account is a little, it's different than a standard account, because each user is actually assigned their own account number. Um, so you have a primary account that's the North Kansas City account. Every user, so Mary's gonna have an account number, Bob's gonna have an account number, um, et cetera. So every person that you say is a part of this program is gonna have their own account number. Um, which means they have to go through some sort of an application verification process. Um, and so you have some limiting options that you can sort of use there to sort of control who's using this program, once you sort of decide, you know, what your goal is with that piece. Um, so in this situation, um, the account is gonna pay basically the first X number of dollars of the trip, and the passenger's gonna pay the rest. Um, or the account can pay the full amount. So again, it's sort of a sliding scale. You set. The price, the, you know, the trip is ten dollars. If you want them to have a two-dollar co-pay, the account pays the first eight dollars, the passenger pays the remainder. Um, the advantage of this is you guys have, um, the ability to limit who accesses the program, and that can be a good way to control costs. Um, the driver's checking the ID of the passenger to confirm that the correct rider is riding. So when someone qualifies. Um, they can't just sort of pass that number around and let extra people do it. Um, the drivers do verify on these accounts, um, who the rider is. Um, the reporting is very complete, because since there was, um, an account number assigned to a user, you know. More information about that user, you know, when they ride, what they ride, and where they go, and what they do, um, and you have access to all that accounting. This is your information. Um, so you have access to all of that for any reporting that you might wanna do, um, as far as if you, I don't know if you've got, if you're able to get. Um, grants or other funding sources, if you, um, are working with certain, um, populations or groups. So. Um, the disadvantage, you do have to set up an eligibility scenario. So. Someone, in order to become a part of this program, has to fill out an application, has to show that they need the eligibility that you guys decide, you know, for this program. Um, there would be a per-trip admin fee. These trips are monitored differently than sort of a standard open voucher account. Um, and the reporting is a little bit different. Um, and so they do have a, an admin fee that, that applies to each one of the trips booked with that. So it does get a little bit more expensive for this type of an account. Next slide. So who currently uses co-pay accounts? Um, Ride KC Freedom On Demand is the biggest user of this account. Um, there's a four-fifty per-trip admin fee for them. Uh, Ride KC, whatever comes down to the real trip cost, Ride KC Freedom covers the first five dollars of the trip. The passenger pays the rest of the fare. So a standard ten-dollar trip, um, which is five miles, the passenger pays five dollars, and they pay five dollars. So it's an even fifty-fifty split. If the passenger goes beyond the five miles, and the passenger's paying the two dollars per mile additional, and that's all just paid directly to the driver. Next slide. Um, so if you went with this type of a trip, again, I'm sort of looking at that three hundred trips per week, which is kind of roughly where you are now. You'd have an admin fee of thirteen-fifty if you did it the same model with the five. Dollars per trip co-pay, you'd be looking at fifteen hundred dollars a week if you guys did. Um, if you guys paid the first nine dollars of the trip, sorry, that's a typo. If you guys did the first nine dollars a trip with only a dollar co-pay. Um, then obviously, your weekly cost would go up to, you know, twenty-seven hundred. Again, this is just sort of easy numbers based on the three hundred. Um, it's gonna totally vary based on your co-pay. Again, it's that sliding scale situation. Um, but it does let you sort of decide who's eligible for the service and, and who you wanna serve and what your goals are with that. Next slide. Um, so this is a city code account. So this is a little bit different. Um, so you still have a similar, um, eligibility process, but this time, each user is actually assigned their own account card. Um, so we currently work through a vendor, um, Cab Connect, uh, and they use a CardOne system. Uh, again, you've got the application verification process. Um, and then when the passenger rides, they actually swipe their card, an in-house credit card essentially, to cover the cost of the trip. Um, and with this, if you're gonna do the co-pay situation, the user actually loads rides, um, onto their card in advance. So for example, if you said. Um, every user can have up to fifteen rides per month, um, and they can load fifteen rides per month on their card. They would go into the portal, and they would purchase their fifteen rides. So if they only charge a dollar per trip. They would pay fifteen dollars to load fifteen rides. If you guys charged three dollars, they would pay forty-five dollars to load fifteen rides. Um, so you guys again have control of setting the, the cost of the trip and the co-pay situation with the trip. Um, the advantages of this, again, you get to limit who accesses the program and controls the cost. Driver again is checking the ID of the passenger, and your reporting here is also very complete. Um, you know, who rode, when they rode, where they went, um, all the things there. So you have, and you also can have co-pay flexibility based on their eligibility type. So some of the people that use this, they have, um, a couple of different pots of money that they utilize for this program. So they have one that's a, a work-access-type program, and one that's a senior program. So they might pay a different co-pay based on which pool they're in, because their grant requires different things. Um, again, the disadvantages, you still have to set up that eligibility process, and there are some additional sauces, costs associated with the cards. Next slide.
Can I ask a question on that slide?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Um, on the, uh, the card, as far as the lot rides that are loaded, are those good for a certain amount of time, or do those roll over each month?
Yeah, so, so actually, the way this works is you guys have a portal that you control that, and so you can put an expiration on those cards, um, to control your liability with those. So you can say. Um, any ride that you purchase is valid for up to one year, and then you can set it up like to do an auto refund for the amount, or what, however it is you want it to work. Um, or it just, you keep the co-pay amount that they paid, um, and then the card will automatically use the oldest rides first. So if they bought ten rides this month, and ten rides next month, and then they rode. Next month, it would use this month's rides first. Does that make sense? So they wouldn't age out.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
On that one, real quick, um, would we be charged when they loaded the ride or when they took the ride?
You're not, so you're never charged until someone actually takes a ride.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So these are the, these are who use the city cards. Currently, you can go to their websites. You can see sort of how they work, the rules that they have laid out for their folks with the co-pays are and stuff. I'll kind of go over that the next slide to you. But. Um, if you wanted to sort of have any discussions, you would be talking to the City of Shawnee or City of Alata about how it works for them, what they do with it, and what they like and what they don't like about it. Okay? Next slide. So if you guys were looking at this, um, city card situation, basically, you'd have your ten dollars per trip. Minus whatever fee it is you charge the passenger when buying their trip. So again, it's their, their co-pay. Um, the City of Alata, they charge their passengers four-fifty per trip. Um, the City of Shawnee charges passengers two dollars per trip. Each participant can purchase ten trips per month. Um, there's a setup fee from Cab Connect. Um, I don't have that number. That's something that they would sort of have to go over with you. I think. You're probably in the one-to-two-thousand-dollar range usually on a setup for it. Um, the cards, I believe, are one dollar each. They provide the card, but it's skinned with your logo, or you are, you can, you can. Tell them what you want on the front of it. So the City of Shawnee has the City of Shawnee across the front of their card. Alata has their Alata Taxi coupon program. Across the front of their card, and in the back is just the standard information that's on the back with the mag strip and the number and all that kind of stuff. So they'll get you through that with all the setup costs. And there's a per-trip fee, which I believe is thirty-five cents standard. I'm sorry, they were supposed to send me their numbers, and. And they didn't get back to me in time to get into this slide, and so I don't have, I think it's around thirty-five cents. But if you're interested in this, we will definitely get you in touch with them. Um, or similar vendors, um, and, and that's something you can definitely explore. Next slide. Um. Oh, so eligibility. So the second two programs both require some sort of eligibility. Um, I understand that you guys might not have the staff in-house set up to do that. So. Um, I was asked to sort of go through some class and what eligibility might look like if we handle the eligibility process on our end for you to assist. Um, so basically, the first thing is you guys set your goals. So you decide. Who the program's designed to serve, who you want to be eligible for this, and how you wanna determine their eligibility. Um, we can actually build a portal for you. For the users to utilize to submit applications and whatever supporting documentation you determine is required. Um, and then we can actually follow your rules to determine the eligibility. We would notify the user and you of each result, so that way you guys can track who is applying, who's denied, who is granted, et cetera. And then we would enroll the user in the program. So if it was a card situation, we would get them set up in there. We would get the card mailed to them. Um, so that they would have that. If it was the first account situation, we would get them set up with their account number, make sure they have all the information on how to use it and that kind of thing. Uh, next page. So if we were gonna do the eligibility for you, we're probably, and again, this is negotiable. So these are conversations that we can have and sort of. And look at, depending on what you guys want exactly, because I'm not entirely sure, um, what you might need. But setting up a portal and licensing, um, for them to be able to send in documentation and have be secure and all that stuff. So. Um, roughly thirty-five hundred dollars on our end to figure out what that's gonna look like. Um, and then fifty dollars per applicant, so we can determine eligibility, um, or you guys would, uh, refer residents to the portal. We'll do all the eligibility notification, notify the user, notify you, and get them set up. Um, again, these are rough estimates. I don't know what parameters you guys want. If it was something simpler, they would go down. If it was more complicated, it would go up. If you guys wanted to cover some pieces like create the portal, um, or whatever, then that reduces your costs, all those kind of things. So we're, we're pretty open. To explore options with you guys, um, to figure out what really meets your needs. Next slide.
Who pays the application fee?
Anywhere, I'm sorry?
Who pays the application fee on that?
Um, so, well, that would be you guys. Uh, and so whether you charge that back to the user, or whether you, you paid that, uh. Whatever the case may be, it's just, I would have bodies in-house that would be running that paperwork and eligibility and taking responsibility. So.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure we weren't directly billing the customer or whatever. So.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 that wasn't my plan.
Go ahead. Sorry. I saw he had his hand up unless he doesn't.
What's up? What was the?
I thought you had your hand up.
I do, yeah. Um.
Didn't say.
Okay, so Teresa, thank you for. Uh, can everybody hear me? I'm, everybody looks frozen.
I can.
Which means I'm. Okay, can, can everybody hear me now?
You can still hear. Yes. All right, council member safer, go ahead.
Uh, what are your provisions for, uh, uh, disability access, realtors, things like that?
Um, so we have accessible vehicles, and we run accessible vehicles in all of these programs. So, um. I'm sorry, I should have put a slide in there for that. I, I apologize. Yep, so we run about eighty accessible vehicles in our fleets. Um, for use, uh, in, as regular taxi and use in these programs. Um, for Ride KC Freedom On Demand, we do an extra five-dollar charge back to the program, not to the user. The end-user never pays different. Um, but Ride KC Freedom does pay an extra five dollars for each wheelchair truck completed, which goes directly to the driver. And basically, that was set up as. An incentive to keep the drivers interested in working their program, um, because they're independent contractors, and so it was just a nice way to make sure that those trips got covered.
Met, follow-up question to that, uh, how are the drivers paid? And what are they paid?
So the drivers are independent contractors, so they pay a lease fee for the vehicle. And that covers the vehicle, um, it covers the insurance, it covers all the dispatch services, it covers all the opportunities to work these programs. And all of those pieces, and then they're actually paid daily. So it's a daily lease. So all the work they do that day. Um, for credit cards and vouchers and accounts are all applied to their lease, and then at the end of the day, after the lease is paid, um, they actually have. Everything that's left over applies directly to their, uh, they have a debit card or their ACH, or, or however it is that they wanna get paid. They can send it wherever they want it.
Do you have any data on what the average take-home pay is?
Um, yeah, so it's a little bit difficult, because we don't track cash. They are independent contractors. Um, so I just have data, um, that would be related to what I know they make on some of these services. So for example. Um, you know, whenever they work a contract or whatever, you know, roughly, their revenue roughly is between thirty and forty dollars a, an hour. Um, is where most of them fall. On the revenue thing. So again, it depends on how many hours they work as to how much they make in a day. But that's, i- if a driver's, if a driver's making less than thirty to forty dollars an hour in revenue, then they're not doing something right. We bring them in and figure out what it is and help them out. So. It's not an awful-paying job.
Council members.
Sorry about that, guys. Uh, computer waited to freeze until I tried to talk. Um, Teresa, thanks for the presentation. Uh, a few questions, and Tony may have asked this first one. What's the driver pool like, uh, number-wise in the Kansas City metro?
So right now, we run, so. So we have our independent contractor pool, which is, um, about two-hundred-and-fifteen to two-hundred-and-twenty drivers. Um, pre-COVID, that was just over three hundred. So we're working to build back up to pre-COVID numbers. Um, now that vaccine access has gotten out, there are a lot more folks are coming back in. So we're gonna get a lot of our drivers returning, which is amazing. Um, and then on the employee side, we have another hundred to a hundred-and-twenty or so employees, um, that work various contracts. So. The Ride KC Freedom, um, contract, for example, is split between employees and independent contractors, and then a lot of the other contracts, um, with. Um, shuttles and things like that are run with employees.
Okay, um, follow-up to that, were, are the, and I'm not sure if this is where Tony was getting at, um, are the, the drivers compensated on a per-ride, or per, uh, you know, if it's a ten-dollar ride, this is the lowest end of what a ride would be worth? Are they compensated based on that number? Um, because that would disincentivize them for picking people up in North Kansas City.
No, so again, so ten dollars is, is just kind of the standard ride. So the average. The average fare, I mean, it kind of depends on the time of the day, too. So, um, no, ten-dollar trips, that's just sort of what they're used to doing. It's just. Ten dollars after ten dollars after ten dollars. That's, that's their deal, so.
Okay, um, so that, that wouldn't be a deterrent. Um, assume we can say. Go ahead.
Sorry, so North Kansas City is, um. Uh, you guys aren't far. So like again, if this was Liberty, that I wouldn't. This isn't something I would sort of probably even consider, um, because I don't have enough drivers up there and ten dollars wouldn't incentivize them to die head to Liberty. Um, but plenty of drivers that work, um, just north of the river, um, between, you know, downtown and the airport and all that kind of thing that I, trip coverage shouldn't be an issue at all.
Okay, um, I, I'm assuming that we're able to set a geographic boundary on these trips so that they could. Okay, uh, so it's only gonna be within North Kansas City. Uh, so somebody can't hop in and try to use it to go to the airport.
Nope.
Okay.
The drivers enforce that too because the drivers know that they don't get paid for that. Um, so if the trip doesn't, um, so that, that's where the reporting comes in. So you guys have the pick-up and drop-off address and geocode information. So you know where all those trips started and stopped. And any trip that didn't, um, start or end within the city limits, you would just simply kick that back and say. You know, that's just not a trip we're paying for. So we screen those out pretty well. Um, before they ever get to you because we're not paying a driver for, um, a voucher or. A card swipe that doesn't meet the requirements of the account.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roberts.
Um, Jesse pretty much hit on everything. My li- my only follow-up would be what the current, uh, wait time for a ride on demand would look like.
So right now you would probably be looking, um, between ten and thirty minutes. Um, again, my driver pool is, is shy of where I want it to be. Um, and as that comes back up, that time shortens. Our goal is to get everybody picked up within about ten to fifteen minutes. And that's. Normally where we are whenever we're not having the joys of a pandemic. So. Um, when driver count is back up, my pickup times are great. They are longer right now and there are absolutely delays right now. Um, so that's where you're probably looking at that slightly longer average.
Councilmember Clement.
A couple of quick questions. Um, Jesse asked about one about the geo, um, stopping the rides in, in North Kansas City if we were gonna expound it, expand it. Um, that was another question that I had was basically scheduling versus, uh, on-demand as far as the, the wait time. Uh, for a ride. Now, one of the other questions that I have is, um, when we, if we do go with the scheduling method. Do these taxis or trips have like a pickup window where they can be a certain amount of minutes early and they'll wait a certain amount of time? Before leaving the residence or business if nobody comes out. Can you give me some information on that?
Yeah, so all the options I gave you are actually, um, basically on-demand. So what'll happen is if someone schedules a ride in advance. So if they call in and say, hey, I wanna pick up at nine thirty on Monday. We work with the independent contractors. We put that out, um, that trip out actually offers out and drivers can accept it up to twenty-four hours in advance. And they can say, hey, I'm gonna cover that pickup at nine thirty on Monday. If the trip doesn't get covered, then that's whenever it goes to live dispatch. Um, and they work to find a driver to get that trip covered. Um, we have pretty good success at that. It is not a, um, you know. I wish I had a one hundred percent on-time performance. Um, and.
Is the ride guaranteed though to get picked up?
I'm gonna get, yeah, I'm gonna get someone there. Um, and I get them there as close to that picked up, pickup time as I can. Um, now if you wanted to do, so when you talk about scheduling, so currently what you guys have. Is a different situation, is a different scenario. So you have trips that are pre-scheduled on a shared ride. Scenario with the bus situation and you put windows in it. So that is something that we do. Um, and that is something that we have the staff and we have the software to do. It is a different program than any of the programs that I was talking about here. We were just sort of talking about the taxi model, um, that were, was there. So whenever we sort of start talking about something like I do with Joko Special Edition. Or Ride KC Freedom where trips are booked in advance, they're routed and they're scheduled. Um, that's a completely different dynamic and a, and a, and a different price structure. Um, so that's not this sort of ten dollar per trip price structure because that's where I'm bringing in. Um, so I have a different piece of software, um, that we use for group loading, um, or for pre-scheduled. Um, trips with windows and parameters. And that's where we sort of start talking about looking closer to Joko Special Edition or Ride KC Freedom. Um, with hourly rates for vehicles and routes and things like that.
I go, council member Toll, and then Saber.
Uh, so that means what we've been talking about up to this point, you are unable to plan ahead, right? We're only talking about call and get it at the same time. Is that what you meant?
No, no, no. So, uh, we have advanced bookings. So a passenger can call and say, hey, I wanna pick up at nine thirty on Monday. And then we have dispatch, they're gonna work to find that. But it's not hard locked into a driver's schedule. Um, so it is still working with the independent contractor model and it is still working with getting them picked up. We have a pretty good pickup. Yeah, but it's, um, it's, but I don't have a window that that's gonna apply to. So I'm.
Second, um, the second half of Zach's question was if you had somebody and they ended up not coming out. At the time, like say they said nine o'clock and then they didn't come out. How long do you wait and then does the city still get charged?
Yep, so the driver normally waits for about five minutes. We don't, on these programs, we don't do no-show fees. Um, so in the program that you have now that you use with the ATA. Um, is gonna be much closer to the programs like that we run also for the ATA with Ride KC Freedom or Johnson County. Special edition. And that's where we pre-book a driver, we put a passenger on a schedule, we have a manifest. Um, there's a lot more. Um, so there's a higher dispatcher per trip ratio. Um, and that would have a no-show fee attached to it. So again, that's a different pricing model that we didn't tie. These are. The on-demand side, um, that wouldn't have a no-show fee attached to that. So the passenger, if they missed the first ride, they would literally just call and book a second one.
Um, council member Saber.
Uh, yeah, follow-up and on, follow-up with that. Is there possible to have a mixed? Uh, on-demand and, um.
Pre-booking? Yeah, so if you guys, eh, eh, there is, um, but it's. It's a, so the pre-booking, pre-scheduled service that you currently have. Is a different model. Um, and, and it's a different thing. So they can do, so per, a passenger can call and request a cab. Um, at a particular time and we do get someone there and we do our best to get it there as close to that pickup time as possible. Um, but we're not creating necessarily a route where we're saying we're gonna pick up Mrs. Jones and then we're gonna go pick up Mrs. Smith and then we're gonna go do this. And everybody's got windows and scheduled times. And we sort of know what the route is in advance. Um, it's gonna be. The contractors that are available and wanna work that area and wanna work that area during that time are gonna be picking up these trips. And it's, it's a, it's a distinction that makes more sense on this side. Um, so yeah, it's, it's a different pricing model. And I mean, if that's something we wanted to discuss. Um, which would be, uh, routing services sort of similar to what you have now with the KCA TA. Um, that's a, that's sort of a different model that we could work on and, and figure out what pricing would be for that. But it is. It's usually a, it's gonna be a per-hour rate. It's gonna have things like no-show fees, um, but you'll have your windows that people are used to normally. Um, and that kind of thing.
What I'm talking about is sort of a mixed service, a combination of the two. Can you work up some pricing on that?
Um. I mean, I guess, what is your goal? When you say a mixed service, what is your goal?
Well, right now it is a mixed service. They can call in for an on-demand ride.
Yep.
Or they can pre-schedule them.
Yeah, so they can pre-schedule with us. Um, so they can, they can book a trip. Again, they can, it's called an advanced booking. They can book a trip in advance. They can book it on the web or they can book it with a call taker. Um, so if they have a doctor's appointment at ten o'clock and they wanna say, hey, I'm gonna book a trip for nine o'clock. And that'll go on the board and we'll get it covered. And we've got dispatchers that, um, work to get that covered. Um, with independent contractors, but it's not, it's not a guaranteed time call is the difference. So. When they call in now and they pre-book and they pre-schedule, um, they have a dispatcher and they have an employee driver and they say, this is your route. Driver and you will be at Mary's house at nine o'clock and you will be at Bob's house at nine thirty. Um, and that is not the scenario where it is here. Um, it's a, it's the on-demand model. Um, and so we do get a cab there as close to that pickup time as we can. But advanced booking is absolutely an option with all the stuff that I went over.
All right. Any other?
Sorry, I, I know, it's, I know.
All right, so, so I got a question. When is our contract with, can you remind me when the contract with KCA TA is up?
So the contract with KCA TA is up at the end of June. And our recommendation, so the, the, the process that we kind of laid out for your consideration was you hear. You've heard the KCA TA presentation, uh, at your last work session, you've asked some questions. We're still waiting to get some. Additional, uh, data for you based upon your questions. And then you are, you're hearing the, uh, Z-Trip Kansas City presentation tonight. At your next meeting, June first, we would ask you to give some kind of indication of what direction you'd like to go in. If you were to indicate that you were interested in going with Z-Trip Kansas City, our recommendation to you would be. That you re-up with KCA TA for one more six-month period in order for us. To come up with the exact program that you'd want to use with Z-Trip Kansas City beginning January first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, uh, I definitely encourage council to, you know. Think about what we heard last meeting, think about what we heard this meeting and, you know, decide what's, what's best for. Our residents going forward. It sounds like we got two very valid choices here. Councilmember Smith.
So at, at the KCA TA discussion, we asked for like, uh, a stack of data. Uh, I haven't seen any of that to make a decision with yet. Um, have I missed that in an email or?
I've, I haven't received it either. So.
No, sir. We're expecting that by the end of the week, but we haven't received it yet either.
Okay, and if, if possible, I'd like to get a copy or something that I can look at after this meeting. Cause it's, you know, drinking from the fire hose as we go. Um, I'd like to get something that we can look at to analyze the numbers or whatever we. You know, whatever we just heard, um, and, and kind of sit and think on it a little bit.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
I thought I saw another hand up. Councilmember Grace.
Jesse just touched on exactly what I was gonna say, which is I'm looking through, I, do we have a copy of the previous presentation? And if not, can we get a copy of their slideshow and then the one that we just watched as well? I'm taking notes on paper, but it'd be nice to be able to. Go back and flip through it at my convenience.
Sure, we can do that. Yes.
Perfect. Uh, Teresa, thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to present this to us. And, uh, look forward to hearing what council has to say. Uh, there's no further discussion from council. Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move your adjourn.
Okay.
Call the roll, please. I guess, or is there any opposition? No opposition to adjourning, we are adjourned.